If we could stand and salute the flag, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call?
Mr. Ricucci.
Here.
Mr. Brenton?
Here.
Mr. Denial?
Here.
Mr. Severson's absent. Mr. Gray?
Here.
Mr. Moss?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Thank you. Report from our planning director?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of items to update the commission on. At its March 13th meeting, the Board of Supervisors considered the regional sewer issue. This has been a proposal to identify how to address the wastewater issues associated with the Auburn area. There were three options being considered by the Board. An upgrade to the existing SMD-1 facility, a regional sewer solution, which would take the wastewater from this area and pipe it down to the existing plant in Lincoln. And then there was a company known as Perk who wanted to construct a new upgraded facility at the location of SMD-1. After extensive discussion, this was discussed both at the December 6th and February 28th Board agendas, the Board took action to approve the regional sewer solution. And so now the City of Lincoln will be taking the lead on the preparation of the environmental document and moving that project forward. The Board also continues to address issues associated with the state mandated dissolution of redevelopment agencies. On February 1st, the redevelopment agencies in the Plaster County region terminated, came to a close. And so now there's a wind down period of as to how to dispose of the properties and the other monies from the agency, and that will take probably place over the next year's time. Staff also provided a one-year update on the implementation of the fowl and poultry ordinance. Over the last year, since the Board approved that ordinance, we have received seven complaints, although there's no quantitative analysis to understand how many residents in the county may be taking advantage of the new ordinance. The primary complaint is that chickens are running free and not being kept in coops. But as the commission may remember, that was not a requirement of the ordinance. It should be noted, all seven complaints that have been received have been resolved, and with the assistance from the Animal Control Division, staff will continue to do public education on this issue. The bottom line is, the fears that were conveyed, both at your commission and the Board of Supervisors, really have not been realized, and the ordinance is being implemented in the manner that we hadn't, from a staff perspective, thought it would be. Just to let you know, April 12th, there will be a Planning Commission hearing. At this point, we have two items on that agenda. A subdivision modification to allow for gated community for the Tarrasina subdivision on Laird Road in Granite Bay, and another subdivision modification to allow for gated community for the Olive Range subdivision in Granite Bay. Just as a bit of background on each of these, when the Board of Supervisors considered the Granite Bay Community Plan, they did acknowledge that there were existing applications that were already submitted and in process through the county, and the Board allowed those to continue to move through the approval process, and so we will be presenting those to you on April 12th. That concludes staff's comments.
Thank you. Okay, now time for public comment. If anybody would like to make comments about items not on the agenda, now's the time to do so. So item number one, the conditional use permit for Lake Putt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Morning Commissioners. The item before you at this time is a request for a conditional use permit. It's a temporary use permit for a two-year timeframe for an aggregate crushing operation on an undeveloped parcel south of Lake Putt. The operation would run from mid-May to mid-October roughly, in both 2012 and 2013 construction seasons. The purpose of the facility is to, or the plant is to facilitate one section of the Interstate 80 reconstruction in the high country. I'm sure you're all aware, there's been a lot of work going on up there. Will continue to be a lot of work going on up there for at least another year or two. In a minute, I'll show you the overall Interstate 80 project, so you can kind of see where we are in the process. The existing road base is going to be removed in sections. As it's removed, that material will be trucked to this site, temporary location. It'll be crushed, and then it'll be recycled and then returned to be used as road base for the continued operation out there. The crushed and screened materials recycle, like I said, and it'll leave the site when the project is complete. This is an example of what the crushing equipment looks like. Typical equipment's going to be 40 to 50 feet in length, and then I guess 12, maybe 12 feet in height overall. They're not huge, they're track-driven, so they can kind of move along. As the material's fed in to the back here, it's crushed and then conveyed out into piles. And the piles, you know, by virtue of the size of the machine, really can't get too tall, so they kind of just cruise along, deposit material in a wide area. All right, it's going to take a little bit longer, I'm one-handed today. This is the Interstate 80 project. The numbers in green, brown, and yellow here have all been completed. This is the final section. This is section three that's in the middle, and it'll run generally from Immigrant Gap area on a past Cisco, almost about partway between Cisco and Soda Springs. It's about a 42-mile section. Is that right?
Overall, it's a 10-mile section. Basically, both the Immigrant Gap, Upper Flatt Area, up to the Henry Box Rainbow, Cross River.
And this would be both east and westbound sides of the highway that'll be resurfaced. Here's an aerial image of the site. Trucks would take access here at Nyack Road. They would come into the parking area. There's a dirt road that runs down the hill, comes around the bottom of Lake Putt, and then this dirt road here would be where the project is going to be proposed. It's a little tough to see there, so what I'm going to do is open it up for you. The area they've identified is this open cleared area here. It's about three and a half acres in size. Not too many trees in that area. What exists there is very thick manzanita. Some of it is tall, six feet. It's just absolutely impenetrable. So when the site is cleared, there won't be really any grading. It's already very level, but there will be removing and grubbing the manzanita. When the site work is completed, the project is done, we have, I think, have a cost estimate, and we'll be retaining 115% of that cost estimate for restoration of the site, replanting of the site afterwards. This is the site plan that's being proposed. It doesn't come in too clear. It's a little dark down here, but essentially the piles would be on either side of this dirt road, currently existing dirt road. Trucks would come in and out in this location. The use permit is requested for a period of two years, as I mentioned. If they don't get it done in time, they could come back in and request an extension of time. This being the last leg of the project, it's likely to be done in that timeframe. One important thing, I think, to note is that the reason they're moving to this location is because they need more room, essentially. There already is an aggregate pile that's at the Cisco Grove site. That will be removed and moved to this location. That Cisco Grove site will then be restored. We have a deposit on hand already that will ensure the restoration of that site when everything's removed from there. So it's not a matter of this being closer to their operations, it's really just a matter of having more area available to work in. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Jerry?
I did have a question. It's probably just a minor point, but at any rate, when you have all the truck traffic and you're restoring the site, you undoubtedly have quite a bit of compaction in the soil. And so I guess what my question is, you know, we talk about planting grass and planting trees, which is a good thing, you know, to restore the area, but from my experience working in the mountains, you don't have much success with that unless you do some tillage that breaks up the compaction. And so I didn't notice that being part of the plan, and it may be in the plan anyway, but if not, I'd suggest that be included.
We'd certainly be happy to add that. We do have cost estimates for site restoration. They weren't extremely detailed, so we don't know exactly what all that entails. There's hydro seeding afterwards, there's planting and monitoring of the trees on the site as well. But we can certainly make sure that when they do remove the material from the site and all the equipment, that the site can be tilled up and properly suited for seeding.
Right. Okay, good. Thank you.
I have a question. Yesterday, the Supreme Court of the United States came down on the Environmental Protection Agency pretty firmly, and to those of us who have dealt with that agency, deservedly As part of that decision, they were looking at the couple in Idaho who wanted to build a house on their residential lot that had city water and sewer to it, but somehow the EPA had decided that it was included as part of the quote "navigable waters" end quote of the United States, and therefore was subject to the jurisdiction requiring all kinds of permits, requirements, costs, money, and so forth. And the upshot of the case yesterday was that they were entitled to have a review of that somewhere within either the EPA itself or within the federal courts. And I looked at that, and I was thinking, well, this is the kind of thing that drives the costs to do business in this country or to live as a citizen sky-high. And having just read that slip opinion, I then looked at your staff report, and my reaction to it, Jerry, was kind of the same, that it looks like there's a lot of piling on here. So I have some questions that the staff and you can address to perhaps assuage my fears that we're not unduly restricting the ability of this particular applicant and others within the county to do business, or to do business at a reasonable level. For example, item number six, I'm looking at the terms and conditions that are attached to your staff report. Item number six, which by the way is a duplicate of number five, await till you dig back there. Okay, we want him to clean up the site following project completion. Not an unreasonable requirement. Do we allow him to post a bond as opposed to cash in 115% of the cleanup cost?
I'm not sure if a bond is what we would accept for that. I do believe it's supposed to be a cash deposit. In either case, the applicants agreed to it.
Yeah, I know. The applicants will agree to anything because they just pass the cost along to us as taxpayers. But, you know, is that a reasonable... Karen, maybe you know the answer to that, or Michael, you know, would a bond, is that something we can permit and exchange or instead of or in lieu of as an alternative to just cash? Because it can get expensive to tie up your money for a long period of time.
Right. On the previous site there at Cisco Grove, there was a cash deposit, I believe. The figure was about $5,000. It was submitted, this was four years ago, when everything started out there. That cost was paid off by Tykert when they took over the site from Granite, I believe it was Granite. So that site, well, that money with the restoration out there, it kind of just moves up and down. It's how we've been doing things for years. The issue of a bond versus a security deposit, I'm not really sure exactly how that gets resolved. I just, I know that historically we've taken cash deposits for these site restorations. Once the site is restored, the deposits returned.
Well, I know how it works. I'm just saying, should we as a county perhaps consider that as an alternative? And I know historically, you're just following suit. Let them huddle over there and see if they can come up with an answer, but in the interim, it was just a question I had. Michael, you look like you want to talk.
The county takes in a variety of different types of securities, and bonds are one type of security.
Okay, so bond is an option for the applicant.
So it would be something that we would look at and consider.
Okay. Then I was looking at number seven, and this may go to the point that Rich Johnson just raised. In your presentation and in your staff report, you talk about the existing conditions out there, that there are very, in fact, the way you put it was, few of these trees exist, and the relative absence of trees was a key factor in the decision to cite the location here. And then you said that the big issue there is going to be brush removal, not grading.
Right.
Because there's what, manzanita and...
A lot of manzanita.
Bushes. Revegetation, we're going to, are you going to require them to put in native grasses, or are you going to require them to put in manzanita?
Native grasses. Manzanita will make its way back in there.
All by itself?
All by itself. The primary cost there, the issue there is replanting of the trees. While there aren't too many trees, and while it is rather sparse, it's only sparse in comparison to what exists around the site. It's pretty thick forest all the way around the site there. So replacing the few, the 14 or so trees that be removed, we think is pretty important.
How many trees are going to be removed?
14.
And that brings us to number nine. Do we really want him to spend money to go out and do a survey for nesting birds? What does that entail? You and I walking around looking to see if we nest?
More or less. It's a biologist going out to the site to ensure that there are no raptor nests. If there are raptor nests, raptors being protected species, the project would have to work around those until such times as fledgling can take flight. That's consistent with the Endangered Species Act, it's a...
Yeah, actually, it says that they should consult with the California Department of Fish and Game to determine appropriate avoidance measures. Okay, then I have a question about number 12. Karen, this is probably more in your neck of the woods. What, tell me about this Lake Putt project out there that this may run some interference with.
This is a standard condition of approval. We place this on any discretionary project, that if this should end up in a lawsuit, basically the applicant has, if not more interest, at least the equivalent interest of the county in defending the approval that's happened. And that's why we place it as a matter of course on any project.
Okay, I was reading this wrong. I was, I thought there was a third project of some sort that was going to run interference out there, and that was the word process, project.
Right.
Because we were referring to this as a plant everywhere until this clause.
Yes, it's just pertaining to this particular project approval.
Item 22, which is on the supplemental sheet that we were given. Tell me about this surface that you want the applicant to put in.
Aggregate, I'll go ahead and let Sarah.
Sarah Gilmour, Engineering and Surveying. We're asking for an all-weather surface for the protection of water quality, dust control, and it's also a general requirement of the fire department. It's six inches of AB in this case because of the temporary seasonal use.
Just rock?
Just rock.
Okay, so it is permeable?
Yes.
Okay.
No pavement, no AC or concrete.
And that was for dust control. And 23, no vehicle or equipment maintenance shall be allowed on site. What happens if the rock crusher breaks?
You've stumped me. It's, you know, it is portable. That's not something we thought about.
We would generally expect them to take it off-site to a maintenance shop because they don't have the, they aren't showing the facilities to properly protect water quality out there from oil spill that could occur during maintenance.
If it breaks, are they going to have to move it somewhere to work on it?
Right. This is movable, almost like a large vehicle.
Yeah, it'll be hauled in by truck.
They could put it on a truck and haul it off, bring a new one out.
It's got to run to get it on the truck.
No, they have to bring in a...
I'm just wondering if that's an unreasonable requirement. What happens if some truck coming up there gets a flat tire? You know, typically, they send out some, some big truck to replace the tire. Can't do that, you got to move it?
Um...
You know, these are, these are kind of strange and overbroad hypotheticals, I understand that. As a practical matter, you probably wouldn't do that. But, you know, based upon the clear words of the requirement here and the condition of approval, and that infamous law of unintended consequences, I'm wondering if this couldn't be better drafted.
I think it's common that we allow some flexibility in the conditions of approval for minor instances like that. I think the issue is that if we don't have a condition like this in place, who knows what can happen up there? We need to have some kind of a trigger. We need to have some kind of a parameter set on the project operation, so changing of tires, I don't know. Maybe we'd be flexible about something like that.
Yeah, and that works great as long as I got Jerry House out there, but then I get a tell-of-the-hun inspector, and, you know, that could be, it could be an issue.
Well, can't we just put another sentence in there saying minor maintenance with the approval of, you know, can be done on site at like?
Let's think about it. Something to that, with the approval of, that's where I get hung up.
You don't want to have to call the county to get permission to change your flat tire.
No, or maybe leave that part off, but anyway.
Or if it's...
Because it's his. No maintenance. I can see an arm breaking, and you can bring a portable welding machine, would take, would take, you know, half an hour just to weld, which wouldn't pollute, I wouldn't think would pollute the water.
We could simply just add a caveat on that sentence, comma, at the end of that sentence, unless authorized by Engineering and Surveying.
Better yet, maybe put the word major before, after the word no and before vehicle.
There we go.
That sounds...
That's right. Then it becomes arguable. Anytime the county has discretion, I get concerned. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So is that rewording, would that be acceptable?
The word major?
Uh, no, no. Well, sure, if you'd like to have that in there, I just thought if you had...
Yeah, that would be acceptable since I suggested it. Unless authorized gives discretion to the county, and I want, I want it more than that. I want the guy to be able to argue.
Mr. Seona, if I could, go back to number 22.
We'll finish this one first. I don't think the staff has the wording that he's looking for from here.
What have you got right now? What I have right here, the word major, I think, is still in play here, but no vehicle or equipment maintenance shall be allowed on site unless authorized by the Development Review Committee.
So, so in Rich's scenario, the arm breaks, and I, and I got the welder here, and I can have it back up and running in a half an hour, but I have to make an application to the DRC?
No, no, not an application. This would just be a request.
Yeah, I like the idea, just put no major vehicle, equipment maintenance shall be allowed, yeah.
That's easier.
Then I can just fix it and argue for forgiveness later.
Make the decision on major.
Pardon?
Who gets the decision what's major?
The applicant.
No.
That's like the fox guarding the hen house.
Well, it's just, it's up for debate. I don't want the hens running the place either.
Is the issue regarding the maintenance, is it more of the fluids, hydraulic fluids and oil and stuff like that? So maybe we could eliminate those that if it's involving...
But if you have, if you, if you break an arm or something, you got to take the hoses off.
You got to do that, too.
But there's BMPs that, in place, I mean, impermeable stuff that they can put underneath. And I don't know, I guess in my mind, I'm thinking that the wording can be, you know, best management practices for containing any potential oil or hydraulic fluid spill.
Isn't he already prevented from contaminating the place? And he has to clean it up when he leaves.
That's more, I think, along the lines of stormwater runoff. I'll let Sarah have it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just thinking common sense even for them. The guy's not going to be out there in a major snowstorm or rainstorm trying to, you know, change the engine out or something unless he has some kind of containment anyway to protect himself.
Right. Yeah, probably it's an issue of hydraulic brake fluid or fuel or something spilling onto the ground and then seeping into the groundwater.
Right. And if they're working on it, they're going to do it. Actually, the bigger danger is, is if they break a line while it's working, it's probably more of a, you know, problem than actually a mechanic fixing something.
You know, I'm trying to equate these two criterias with like a log landing, where logging is going on, and happens all over the county, and in this particular area, too. And so they're going to have a service rig up there every day. And when something breaks, you know, I mean, rather than load it on a lowboy and take it back to the office, which is an extreme expense, if it's something they could fix on site, then they're going to need to have the ability to do that. And it seems like where you have somebody from the county making the judgment whether or not they can do that, that puts an extra burden on the operation. And to define exactly what they can do and what they can't do, at this point, the Planning Commission is impossible for us really to do, because none of us really have that experience, and probably the inspector that's working with the project doesn't have the experience either. But I guess my experience is that, you know, they're, they're going to keep their operation going, and there will be some oils that get into the dirt maybe, or, but it's a minor amount. It's not something that's going to really pollute the environment in a big way. And so, so at any rate, if you, you know, if they have to tear an engine out, maybe they have to take it someplace else, but it's almost discretionary, I think. And expense for, expenses involved in putting on a lowboy and taking it down to a shop is very, very high. So, hey, I have questions about this, too, in comparison with, with what goes on all over the county and logging operations right now.
That's why I suggested the word major.
I think that would be okay, I think, the word major.
I think that it might be okay, only if that, if any repairs that are going to be done there, they must use BMP standards if the repair's going to be done there.
Minimize.
They can't, they just can't start working on it just the way it is right now. They would have to go in and, like you say, put an interreal cloth underneath it or some...
Or whatever is called for by BMPs.
Exactly. So they don't get the call free and clear, they just have to, if they want to decide to do it on site, then you got to prepare the property so that they can have a leak and not disturb it. How's that sound?
Yeah, absolutely. And what I can also do is, we have a standard of the company or company's safety practices for any of these types of situations that come up. And make sure that you guys look at how to handle things.
Could you, Mr. Chair? Could you come up, please?
Right.
Yeah, we're kind of getting into a discussion before we...
I'd be more than happy to submit our code of safe practices of how we'd handle these particular situations. Basically, the way that we've kind of gone about how we look at it and the way we've handled our crusher site up at Cisco currently, is any general maintenance is performed on site, obviously, to make sure everything's running, hoses aren't looking worn, so that we can kind of avoid these type of situations. Anything that is, that may come up, like what we're talking about, unavoidable hose breaks, anything like that, we have measures in place that we can contain that stuff. BMPs will be placed around the site, as we've kind of laid out and talked about with Jerry. And we have the means to be able to handle it. We also have a SWEP consultant that is part of our job, that will make sure that everything's documented and everybody's notified, and if it is a major thing that we're able to load up that piece of equipment and get it off-site so that we can avoid any potential hazardous type situation, then we would definitely do so. But if it's broken, we can't get it on a lowbed, then we're going to be stuck in that situation, and we will take the appropriate measures.
Would you agree that it would be nice to have the option of doing that there?
I would agree, absolutely, especially if it's something that is, that you can fix on site with one of our mechanics. We have a mechanic on site daily just for our particular job, and we have our own fueler and lube guy that comes up and makes sure everything's running and...
I'm not too concerned about your company's particular safety rules and regulations, because this has the tendency to become the model for others, and we see the Tykert one up there every now and then, and I want to make sure that we can apply this generally to all those, because, you know, there's repairs on I-80 constantly.
Yeah.
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, staff would recommend the following modification to condition 22. All vehicle and equipment maintenance shall implement appropriate BMPs and assure compliance with county and state clean water requirements.
You meant 23?
Condition 23, I'm sorry.
That sounds fair.
That sounds good.
Okay.
Anything else?
Okay, I want to go back to 22. I guess, I was having a little trouble finding it here when we were really discussing it, but I did now. And so we're going to, over a large part of the site, apply six inches of gravel?
That's correct. The gravel, I don't think, would be underneath the material storage areas. It would be in the circulation area, so basically the roadways.
Where the truck traffic is.
Yeah, so the trucks coming down this road, this is dirt. It's a pretty steep road coming down. This is all dirt, this is all dirt, so that's where the...
It would be on the main hall road is where the gravel?
Main hall road, yeah.
But not within the site?
No. No, the piles of material would be on either side of the road piled up that way.
This kind of reads like where you have parking and circulation?
Yeah, there's, that's a standard condition. There's really not any parking there except up at Nyack Road where there already is.
There will be circulation in the site, though, I wonder.
Well, this is the circulation. Well, this is the circulation, so the circulation route, the roadway would be covered with, with aggregate.
Well, so once they leave the road, there won't be any aggregate, uh.
Right, they'll remove that, I believe they're gonna remove that.
It's, the intention is wherever the trucks are circulating through, come in, turn around, go out, not where the stockpile is, and I believe that's shown on the site plan.
Uh, when they're finished, will the aggregate, will the gravel be removed?
Usually it is, yes, it's hauled off to the next location.
Okay.
Yeah, so you won't be building any permanent roads within the, uh, processing areas that are being?
No.
No, no approvals for that, the grading permit's not gonna address that, so it wouldn't be approved, in other words.
Okay.
Temporary.
So I guess just to reiterate, it's just the main road, the main whole ro- whole road coming into the site, is all it would be on gravel?
Yeah, the circulation route, right.
Okay, and that would be a permanent fixture on this road?
Uh, well, the aggregate, the, the gravel will be removed when the site works completed, it'll be restored back to what it's out there right now, the restoration allows for that.
E- even the road.
Why would they remove it from the road?
That's how it's written with temporary uses, it's supposed to be returned to the previous condition, that's, that's how these temporary permits are.
It's, it's road now, isn't it, or is it road?
It's, it's, it's a dirt road, it's used just, I think, for access and maintenance of the, of the, of the reservoir out there.
Okay, uh, I guess, I guess where I'm maybe struggling is, uh, you know, it's an improvement to the road, I guess it's gratis on the part of, uh, the company that's doing the work.
Well, you know.
But why make them pull it up, uh, later, unless PG&E's asking for that to be pulled up for some reason?
Well, that's what has been happening, given this is the last stretch of the Interstate eighty construction, maybe it's appropriate to just leave it in place.
If it's an existing road, uh, it seems like an additional cost to have them pull up all the gravel when actually it does improve the conditions of that road.
Right, keep the dust down.
Yeah, but it's.
I take no exception to that.
Is that a road to anywhere, or is that just like a, pretty much a dead end?
And actually, once you get down to this end, down here, you can't get through, it looks like they connect, but they actually don't connect, the road just sort of stops over there. So it is, and the, and the only other way to get into this area is by coming down Putt Road and then there's, uh, I think it's a private easement, one little house out here somewhere. So this is really not traversable, it would, it would appear so from the area view, but it's not, not designed to be a thorough, thorough feather.
Would we cause more damage trying to get rid of that aggregate than just leaving it there, because over the course of construction, you know, it's gonna be pounded down into the ground, it's gonna get wet from the rains and pounded in further, uh, you know.
Well, these roads up there that are just dirt roads, you know, people drive down them and they're a source of dust, and so if you get the road improved up to a level that, even if it's just accessing PG&E traffic, uh, you know, it's, it's probably a benefit to just leave it there rather than go to all the costs to pull it up.
Might actually prevent erosion.
To remove the gravel?
Uh, only as a part of the planning commission to remediate the site, uh, engineering doesn't have any conditions that speak to that.
So if we.
That was the assumption, but it, I don't have a problem if it wants to stay.
So if we just focus site remediation on the materials, stockpile area, that would be fine?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, then do you want to modify condition six?
You gotta, gotta word, put some wording there about the road then, that's about all that needs to be included in there.
We refer to the removal of aggregate.
Right.
Do we want to just remove that?
Yeah, we could just take off of aggregate gravel and so that, it would read the cost estimate shall include removal of all equipment and vegetation of site.
Yeah.
I think what that gets to though is that's, there's a stockpile there, that's the aggregate, some of the aggregate material that needs to be removed, you can't have a giant pile of asphalt sitting there, that's called. So, so some of that needs to be there, we would need to change it to, to reflect that just the road, road base could stay.
I, I'd recommend modifying that, the applicant doesn't own the property, so I'd recommend modifying that modification to say, subject to approval of the property owner.
That makes sense.
They ought to have a say so, probably.
Well, we do require them to provide a copy of their lease with the, uh, property owner and presumably as part of the lease negotiations, all these terms and conditions would be considered. While you're at it, Jerry, which do you want to eliminate, five or six? Or do you somehow see?
You know, they're both mitigation measures, uh, I know they seem redundant, but the first one is mitigation for aesthetic impacts and it relates to the second mitigation for, uh, biological impacts, so they kinda both have to be in there even though they say the same thing. It's, it's a single cost estimate for a hundred and fifteen percent of the restoration.
For site cleanup and restoration?
Yeah, if you look at the bottom, at the end there, Jerry, uh, mitigation measure one point one, that's addressing the aesthetic impacts of the site, which are temporary in nature, provided that they restore the site. Condition six is mitigation measure specific to the biological impacts of the site, which are a little different, but they both are addressed in the same fashion.
Okay, I will admit, I don't go out to the standard conditions and read all of those.
It's a lengthy process, it's no fun writing them either.
All right, anything else?
Yeah, I have one question concerning when the, uh, property is cleared to start with, the manzanita trees, what do you do with those?
Uh, those are grub and I think they're gonna be hauled down to the biomass facility, uh, Sheridan or Lincoln? Lincoln.
Okay.
Well, you don't burn out, we know that.
Okay. Think we've about beat this to death?
I think so.
Is there anybody from the public who wants to comment on this?
I have one more question.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
In, in light of what we're talking about here, uh, is that part of the, uh, conditions that they're gonna haul it down to the biomass facility?
Uh, it's stated, I think, in the mitigation, um, mitigation, the mitigated nec deck, and so it's a mitigation measure for removal. It's a, it's a standard, uh, air quality, uh, mitigation that you can't open, burn it on the site, it's gotta be handled in a different manner. So in the, in the environmental document, it's addressed.
Yeah, I guess, uh, going back to my background, you know, there's agency I used to work for, builds huge piles. And, uh, at certain times of the year when the conditions are right, and it's difficult sometimes to reach those conditions, but when the conditions are right, they can get a permit from the, uh, air pollution control district and with that permit, if they wanted to, uh, dispose of it on site by burning, it's a possibility. So if we're requiring hauling down to a biomass facility, I guess there's a choice there economically that they make, but.
Yeah, actually, this came in as a project description, it's what the applicant.
Oh, that's what they wanted to do?
Yeah.
Okay.
We know for certain that there's no open burning on the land, because that's a specific condition, but beyond that.
Oh, what do you mean by open burning?
Piling it up in a big pile and when the conditions are right, which rarely happens, uh, getting a permit and burning it.
And all I'm saying is on the public land, right next door to that.
Open burning occurs.
It could happen, you know, it requires a permit.
Right.
But there's no criteria that's.
Well, it's not complicated anymore.
Actually, the mitigation measure, um, states during construction, no open burning of removed vegetation shall be allowed unless permitted by the air district.
Oh, okay, so they could do that, they have that option, okay. That's all I was concerned about, you know, I mean, options, and the economic decision is the person that's doing the work.
Anything else?
Think that's got it?
All right.
Is there anybody from the public wanting to speak on this matter?
Did you invite the applicant?
Uh, my name's David Petroncola, I live within a few thousand feet of the project, um, certainly less than a half a mile. And several of my other neighbors do also and they've asked me to come here and put forth our concerns about this. But one of the things I'd like to address is, that's come up here, is that that road is actually part of a series of trails that the locals use frequently to access the Nyack, uh, service station and post office and whatever. Everyone from, that gets off the Blue Canyon exit to go home often uses that trail. So it's not an unused trail and any improvements that might be left behind would probably be appreciated by most of us. The things we're mostly concerned about primarily is noise. I can only assume that this crushing plant is going to be rather loud and it's going to impact our quality of life over the two years that it's in operation. The hours of operation, I've not been privy to the proposal, all I have is this notice that was sent out. Is this thing going to be operating twenty-four seven? Or is it going to be just during daylight hours, or when, when's it going to be operating?
Jerry?
Okay.
Hours of operation?
It's gonna be standard hours of operation for noise consistent with the, uh, um, Plaster County General Plan.
In item three of the conditions.
The conditions, right, line those up.
Six, six AM to eight PM, Monday through Friday.
Okay.
Eight AM to six PM on Saturdays and not Sundays.
And nothing on Sunday, and these would be again for the period of, uh, mid-May to mid-October. We did, uh, in the analysis, noise was a big concern, I, I will, I will grant you that.
Very big concern for me, I'm living very close.
I understand.
It's in my backyard, basically.
Right, I understand, what we required was the applicant to submit specifications from the equipment they're gonna be using that, uh, demonstrate the decibels, uh, that would be generated by the equipment. We then measured out to the nearest residence and I can't point it out here, but I think you're just on the, uh, the south kinda west side of that, uh, that straight road that comes off of Putt Road.
Right, I know where that one is.
Okay, uh, and as near as that is, the decibels that we measured would be about fifty-one, fifty-one decibels, uh, which is below the threshold for the Plaster County General Plan.
Okay. Uh, we're worried about dust in general and silica dust specifically. And what it might do even long after the project's over with, you know, if there's a significant amount of new dust generated in the area, we don't know, we're not, we're, none of us are environmentalists, uh, we just are concerned about the dust problem, you know, and how much of it are we gonna end up breathing, how far will it travel? Worried about potential impacts on water quality. Now, this area is a watershed that eventually ends up in the American River. And, uh, we're worried about our wells, we have some of the best water in the state right now and we'd hate to lose that. Worried about security, there's, uh, gonna be a lot more traffic on those back roads, uh, which is another concern, is the, the damage that might be caused on all the other back roads in the area that they, you know, even, even though they might be not using them for their project, people wander. And we don't want them wandering into our backyards and these roads connect up to our backyards. And while apparently if they're not running at night, one of the other concerns is light, potential for light pollution, but if they're not gonna be running at night, then that's not a concern. But that's pretty much what three of us have, three or four of us have come up with as, as concerns.
Hey David, before you sit down.
Sure.
On that little remote control by your right hand there, there's a button you can press that makes a red dot.
Sure.
Can you point it up to the slide and kinda indicate where you live?
Um, it would be down here somewhere.
Jerry, isn't there a bigger slide?
My property.
You zoomed in for that one.
My property is in the corner. Okay, Dick's property is right about there, and I'm right next to Dick.
If you use the back arrow, I think it'll go back to a previous slide and back out to a larger picture. There you go.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, now where?
My place would be, let's see, is Judah Road right here, my house is right about here.
Okay, where are the railroad tracks?
Right there.
Okay. And what's the train like between you and the project site? Is it uphill, level?
It's, no, it's way down in the valley. There's my yard, right there.
Oh, you're closer?
He's closer, yes. Yeah.
What I was trying to get a sense of was, you know, proximity to that versus railroad tracks.
Okay, the railroad tracks is down in this fairly steep valley.
Uh-huh.
Thousand feet below us.
Okay.
Um, whereas this project is almost on the same level we're at.
No, I know what you meant, and, and versus the freeway, okay, thank you.
Okay, that's all I had to say.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Yeah, okay.
Good morning, Marilyn Jasper, speaking on behalf of Public Interest Coalition, uh, not to beat twenty-three to death, but if the word major is, if it's amended or changed to add the word major, I would ask that you consider adding language that continues and says, "and" that the county shall be notified before any maintenance is undertaken. Notification, not anything to be concerned about, but the county could go out and check, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Back to the commissioners?
Yeah, Jerry, what do you think about the last comment?
Well, Marilyn, what we did was not adopt that word major, there was another one that was proposed by staff that, uh, uh, required the implementation of best quality practices and so forth for any such maintenance that would be required on the site. I'd like to have the commission and the planners address the comments, uh, with respect to water and dust, as you were making your comments, I remember reading through here, you know, multiple, multiple requirements to control dust for water, for aggregate base, it went on and on and on and on, and I'm wondering. Oh, oh, okay.
All I had was, well, the county's been out telling me about this being.
Okay, and, and dust, I think both of those, the counties were extremely sensitive to those issues.
And, and I imagine the applicant will talk on those issues too that have been brought up.
I hope so, and then the issue of noise, there are limitations on time, of course, but I often wonder, you know, you guys live out there, you got a freeway not very far apart and it's extremely major freeway and the railroad tracks right below you, I don't know how much additional noise this would add to the mix. Yeah, they make noise, it's what happens, but, you know, you guys have lived up there for a long time, you know that that highway's always under reconstruction someplace. And, uh, so I'm wondering myself, what will the noise impact be, and Jerry, you talked about it in terms of DB. You know, as a practical matter, will it add much to the ambient noise in that general area?
It will add to some ambient noise, fifty-one decibels is about what you're hearing right now, uh, maybe even a little bit lower, fifty-one's, uh, pretty low. Right next to the equipment, I think it's around the order of seventy to eighty decibels, it's a pretty loud crushing operation. Uh, but there's also a lot of topography and, and vegetation out there, uh, even, even not accounting for the topography and the vegetation using a ratio, I think it's six decibels for every doubling of distance that you have, it's a commonly accepted, um, measurement of noise decrease over, over distance. The resulting, uh, noise level at the property lines would be about fifty-one decibels, uh, as I mentioned, below, below the Plaster County guidelines.
So as a practical matter, are the neighbors going to be, uh, bothered much by this or be able to tell that it's running?
Uh, I can't speak to whether or not they'd be bothered, but they're gonna hear a little bit of noise out there.
Okay.
It'll be temporary in nature and, and.
Stop at night?
Right.
It, it will be audible, but within county standards.
Question, if they have, uh, the neighbors have a complaint, whether it be noise, dust, or anything else they see out there, is there, do they call us, the planning department up, uh, to issue, uh, or just, please make a comment if, if they're, if the applicant is abiding by all the conditions that are in our documents? Maybe you should give them their, that number too.
You know, with, with new construction, uh, projects, um, project that's a permanent project in nature where they're building residences or, or businesses or something, there is a common standard condition that we, that we apply, uh, that requires posting of the county number, uh, or a one-eight-hundred number actually, that the applicant provides, uh, if there are any kind of noise issues. Um, I actually don't think that that one got applied here, but we could certainly add that standard condition, uh, that they have posting of the, um, uh, of, of a number that they can call for to report noise violations.
Well, I think the number is, 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 is good because, you know, you can call a lot of numbers at the county and not, not get the right person, so you have a number that can be posted, that would be, I think, a.
Okay, I, I don't have that language with me here, um, but.
Well, let's use the standard language.
Yeah, we'll take a standard conditional language.
And the right number, correct number, I should say, thank you.
Sure.
I'm Michael Gerbeeding with Friends of the North Fork, we don't have any, uh, position or co- on this, my comment that it sounds like it might actually lead to speeding along the process towards Forest, which occupies over time the manzanita fields up there on, and this sounds like it might actually lead to some advance in that direction. The question we have, we've seen in other cases, uh, for planning is, it, it, from the staff report, it appears there has been an environmental document prepared, but it also appears that the neighbors were not notified of the existence of this, now I'm guessing, it just sounds like they've gotten notice of this hearing and we've raised in other situations a concern that until the item gets before the, uh, officiating agency, whether it's the planning commission or other, uh, county authorities, we've noticed that the environmental document has not been notified, the owners who would, are notified, such as in this situation. such as in this situation, they have not been notified about the existence of the environmental document or of the opportunity to comment on it. Now, I believe that those are noticed in the newspaper and things like that. So my question is, you know, did the county, and why not? Why, did the county notify landowners within the same area, the same distance that are notified of this hearing? Did they notify them of the environmental document and the opportunity to comment? That's my question.
Thank you. Here.
All standard notification requirements pursuant to CECL were, were applied in this case, just as they are in all projects we have, we perform environmental documents for.
So were they, were landowners notified in the same manners for this hearing of the existence of the environmental document to comment on and its existence?
You know, for an EIR, we send out a notice of preparation to all the adjacent landowners for a NEG deck. It gets published at the State Clearing House. It's standard operating practice in this case. And like, we're all NEG decks, actually.
Well, we, we suggest the county consider changing its rules to notify property owners of NEG decks.
It's a worthwhile consideration.
Thank you. David. Does the applicant want to get up and say anything else?
How did you get that through the mail?
You will notice, Jerry, that legal notice does state that there was a mitigated negative declaration prepared for the project.
And was that? Basically, just to address any of the surrounding landowners' concerns, we'd be more than happy to show you the document that we had prepared by the environmental company that we had to go out and take a look at everything. We're absolutely in no way trying to hide anything. We're just trying to follow the appropriate steps that we need to try to get this approved and to be able to use the land. As far as any of the dust mitigation or any of your concerns in that respect, they're addressed in there. We're, we had our own recommendations of how we wanted to take care of the dust, which we are required to do on all of our projects. Dust is a huge, huge deal. There's going to be water truck on site maintaining that road. That's why we're lining the road with the six inches of AB to basically help control that dust. The site will be sprayed down. All the ag piles will be wetted down, but not drenched to where you have an absorbent amount of water running off. The only water that's going to be coming off that site is going to be rainwater when it rains, you know, periodically throughout the season. As far as your guys' concerns with hours of operation, we were going to go with what, you know, the county standards were allowing us that timeframe. There will not be any crushing operations going on at night. And usually, we're done crushing by five, six o'clock. So it's not going to be, you know, twelve hours a day of just, you know, nonstop going at it. As far as access you guys need to get through, we'll make every effort to be able to accommodate which way you guys need to go. It's, it's my understanding that we are going to make it to where the only people that are on that site are the plant operator and then maybe one or two of the operators for the two pieces of equipment that'll be on there. You'll have the water truck kind of rotating through. They will not be allowed to park on site. They're going to park over where our NIAC office facility is and then we'll bring them over. So as far as extra traffic or cars or congestion in that respect or people wandering around, that is absolutely not going to be permitted. You know, they don't need to be wandering around or exploring trails. They're up there to do a job and that's what they're going to do.
Suggestion?
Why don't you give them the phone number as opposed to the county number? It might get more results.
Yeah. And I'd be more, more than happy to, you know, share with you those documents and kind of put your minds at ease.
Okay, I have a question.
Okay.
Is, is this road normally a gated road?
Uh, it's not gated. Basically, with your little red dot here, where it kind of comes in, this is basically the NIAC shell. And then right across the street right here, this is all a AC paved parking lot where a lot of your long haul truck traffic come and stop. Some of them camp there, you know, overnight, kind of rest up. There is a Burger King there that they stop and get stuff to eat, you know, on a daily basis. And so right at the back part of, of that AC parking lot is where you see that road kind of come down and then it skirts the lake down into where we're proposing our site to be. So that road is dirt and that's what we'll be mitigating there. I was also going to ask a question. As far as.
Yeah, let me just clear, make sure I got, got it. So that road is normally open to anybody that wants to drive it?
Right. There's no gate. There's, there's nothing restricting it. I, I would assume that, you know, that's what these gentlemen use to access their house. We, we haven't seen an absorbent amount of traffic other than maybe, you know, people who live back there, going back there. And so our intent is, we're going to basically be monitoring our truck traffic who, you know, they, they'll be coming down that road, coming in here, doing a loop and coming right back out. That's as far as they're going to go. When, when we're talking about clearing the site, some, you know, I kind of came into our process about six months ago with what was prepared. Is it a possibility with the vegetation that is on site, when you do stockpile it, is there a way that you can chip it and use it as base material to kind of help alleviate dust as well? Or is that considered?
Let me see. You know, I guess, I guess one of the things, one of the things that frequently happens is there are people that have the type of chip, can chip it up. Now, if it's, if it's fairly clean, you know, you can haul it down to a biomass plant and they can use it that way.
Right. Yeah, and we're, we're more than prepared to do that.
So you probably will be chipping it anyway on site.
Right.
Before you even haul it off.
Okay.
But leaving it there, I don't know, I guess that'd be up to the county to make that.
Justin, to address that, I think when we go through the grading plans, you could certainly propose that and we'll consider it. I don't, you know, just briefly discussing with Sarah, I don't think either one of us have an issue with that.
Okay. Yeah, because I, you know, to help with the dust mitigation, maybe it makes sense in some of the areas, especially where trucks are going to turn around, you know, that kind of acts as a little bit of a buffer as well. Just an idea.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Of course, I have a question for staff if I could. I, the staff packet that, that you gave us, is that available online prior to these meetings?
The mitigated NEG deck is available online. Regarding the staff report, I'm getting a nod over there, yeah.
Okay.
Our county website's going to have that.
Going to, you're talking in terms of future? I meant before today's hearing.
No, no, it's, it's online now.
Okay.
It's been.
Reason that I ask is the notice that was sent out that I'm holding in my hand doesn't refer to the website at all. I think that would be in, in response to Mr. Garabedian's comments, really advantageous if we would put in there where this stuff can be located prior to it. Both the NEG deck and any of the terms and conditions in the staff report so that he can look at it and satisfy his own inquiries as to dust and noise and whatnot. Now, the rest of us know that it's there. We'll go digging through until we find it. But, you know, everybody else that doesn't deal with this daily might not.
That's a great recommendation and we will get that incorporated into our standard notices that go out.
Okay, David, thanks.
David, why don't you, why don't you take my, our staff, that's a copy of it.
Oh.
What we got, so you don't have to go to the.
Well, is it online?
It's online, but go ahead and take it. So, you know, we've done our, we're about ready to finish our business here.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no further discussion, I think the issues of noise and water and dust have been adequately discussed by the commission and staff. And if there's no further discussion, I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
I recommend that the Planning Commission approve the conditional use permit for the Lake Putt Materials Processing Plant, subject to the findings that are in our staff report and the attached, the recommended conditions of approval that are attached to our staff report with items number twenty-three and number six as modified during today's hearing.
And then do we have a condition to post a phone number on there also? For the.
That would be a new condition twenty-five.
Okay, we can add that. We'll add condition twenty-five that posted where? On a sign somewhere on the facility?
Typically, we would post those at the entrances to the site. It's the most, it's, it's the easiest place for the public to see where, where to, what may be happening there. It's the easiest place for notification to occur.
So the condition would be to post a number for contacting the county or the applicant?
It would, it would be the county. It's the county phone number that it's attached to.
At a location to be determined between the applicant and the county. Okay?
They can show that on the grading plan, so that's when we'll address it.
Okay.
Before they have any site disturbance at all, we'll have a location identified that's most appropriate.
And on, on larger sites, similar to our notification, our site notification, we may have multiple locations where the signs would be posted. We'll, we'll work with the applicant on that.
Okay. Well, with those three.
Say, Jerry, could you, you said number six.
Yes.
What's your modification there?
Gee, I don't know. Let me put my glasses on.
Jerry, I think you were talking about the redundancy, number five and number six.
No, we were talking about removal of the aggregate.
Aggregate gravel.
Okay, that's a different condition.
Oh, which one is?
What, what staff would recommend is on condition six, the second sentence be modified to state the cost estimate shall include removal of aggregate, comma, gravel and all equipment, comma, and then in perenns, excluding any road based gravel.
Okay. Okay, I thought we had addressed that, but that's perfectly acceptable to me as the maker of the motion.
Say, say, Jerry, if, as you're making the motion, number seven,
what, what I would recommend here is that we include the word tillage.
And the first sentence that says revegetation of the sites shall include tillage hydroseeding with native grasses and planting of replacement trees in the following manner. And so at least it puts the word tillage in there so we know that we're breaking up the compaction on the site.
Okay, let me finish. Condition six.
Yeah.
Commissioner Gray pointed out that we had also discussed, Michael, inserting the words with the permission of the landowner in there with respect to leaving the aggregate.
Or having it removed.
That if he doesn't want it, it's, it's coming out.
That, that will be included.
Okay. And you want to add the word tillage?
Mm-hmm.
Before hydroseeding?
Excuse me?
Before hydroseeding in number seven?
Yeah.
What, what does that mean?
Tillage is like you're, you're working a field.
Plowing.
And you're breaking the soil up. And where you have compaction, that's an enemy of vegetation. So if it doesn't happen, then, you know, the hydroseeding and the tree planting is off or not. Or else it takes an extended amount of time for the vegetation to return.
Okay.
Because of the compaction. But if you put tillage in there and it's quite commonly, it's done with what they call a winged ripper, which is like, like a ripper, but it's got a, a wing on the bottom of it that as you pull it through the soil, lifts the soil up and lets it drop. And that breaks the compaction up so that the roots of the plants can get established quicker. So that's what it means.
Does that make sense to staff?
Yeah, that makes sense. The seedlings, in this case, in the restoration, the seedlings are going to have to take root. And typically, the first foot or so of land that's compacted that heavily can be, it could be like hardpan.
Okay. Then my motion includes the modifications to twenty-three. Number six is discussed with Mr. Johnson here a few minutes ago. And on number seven, including the word tillage before the word hydroseeding.
And the new condition twenty-five?
And the new condition twenty-five about the phone number.
I have a second.
Okay, do we have it all?
The maintenance issue, was that in twenty-two or twenty-three? Whatever, but was that?
That was twenty-three.
Twenty-three, that was me, okay.
Michael read it, opposed one during. During our discussions that I was adopting in my, in my motion.
Okay, so we.
We had all nodded affirmative.
Do we have a second too, did I hear?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So be it.
Okay. Thank you for coming. Oh, are you, anybody wishing to appeal this? I guess may do so within ten calendar days. The fee to appeal is five hundred and twenty dollars. Item number two, I understand, has been asked to be postponed?
That's correct. The item before you, that would have been before you for consideration was an appeal of a sign height variance that was approved by the zoning administrator on February sixteenth. An appellant came in, submitted an appeal application within the ten day timeframe for an appeal. Zoning ordinance, specifically section seventeen, six, zero, one, one, zero, C one, allows an appellant thirty days to submit additional material. As the application was submitted on the, on the twenty-seventh of last month, we got a little, little trigger happy with this one and, and set it on an agenda before we had given him appropriate time to submit additional explanatory information. We do have an appeal that, that's about six pages long. It's a good hearty appeal. And we've begun addressing some of the issues, but there will be additional information. He's requested, they have requested additional time to submit that information. They've also requested that this item, before you can take it up for consideration, go to the Donner Summit MAC at their next available meeting, which fortunately occurs shortly after the next hearing date that we could have scheduled this for. So this would have set, this would have been set for continuance. We would have requested it for the twelfth of April. The Donner Summit MAC meets on the nineteenth of April, so we're requesting that it be heard on the, the following hearing, which I think would be the tenth of March.
Would be the tenth of March, maybe the tenth of May.
About May, my apologies. Tenth of March of twenty thirteen.
That's too far out.
Discussion or comments, or do we just need a motion, or?
If you need the motion, do we have to have a specific time or just a date?
Just a date. I believe at least the applicant, maybe the appellant, would like to speak on the continuance.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, just to follow up on Mr. Brentonall's point there. Typically, with continued items, we try to have them early on the agenda. So presumably, this will be one of the first items on the agenda.
Oh, we don't have to specify a time it's moved, yeah.
Yeah.
Morning. My name's Gary Hines. I'm with DEFCON. We are the construction management firm and general contractor that has been retained for the work at Lucky's Travel Plaza, which this variance request is a part of. This is the owner of the facility, Mr. Lucky saying, with RBS LLC. We would take exception to the continuance. The apparent aim of this is not so much to, to contest the variance of the height as, in so much as to an attempt to preclude the owner from transacting business and vending diesel fuel on the facility, which is pretty much evident in the forms that were filed. That has nothing to do with this. This is, a project has been in the works for two years. Two years, there's been more than ample opportunity for Mr. Garabedian or anyone else if they wanted to contest it previously. It's already gone through planning, been approved by planning. So what we're asking for here is, with this variance, was not anything that would give us unfair advantage as the, Mr. Garabedian point, has pointed out or contested. We were actually only asking for a variance that made up the disadvantage we would suffer by relocating our sign closer to the IAD corridor on the owner's property. We were removing two signs, replacing with one, and it was in the interest of complying with state ordinance for mandatory advertising. Even if this were not approved, that sign that's there will be altered to comply with state code. And the county has no jurisdiction in prohibiting that. That is a code requirement from the state, from weights and measures. So we feel it is unfair to the owner to delay the project further, to send it to another review panel up on, at Tahoe Donner, which really has nothing to do with this property. We're not, this is not a scenic design quarter. I know it's slated as a possible scenic design quarter. That has really, that is really irrelevant because we're dealing with what it is, not what it could be. All the things that the appellant has listed in their paperwork are really baseless. All the things that the appellant has listed in their paperwork are really baseless and have nothing to do with what we've asked for. Again, we only asked for a variance that leveled the playing field for, and brought us into compliance with state ordinance. Want to add anything to that?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to kind of add on to that, you know, we just wanted to point out the reason we were given the approval, approval for the variance was because the place we're going to locate the sign is twenty feet below where the adjacent surface, which is I-80 is. So thus, we were given the twenty feet to make up for that, that amount of surface that we would have lost. And that's pointed out in staff's report as well, and when we came to the last variance hearing.
Not, not to, I think though.
Mr. Chair.
We're dealing with an ordinance or a law that basically precludes, precludes us from hearing this today because of the timeframe?
Yeah, I want to state for the record that the issue right now before this commission is whether or not to continue this appeal. The applicant is now broaching into substantive issues regarding the variance. These need to be brought up at the appeal hearing on the variance, not during the issue of whether this should be continued or not.
Okay, well, I can address that real quick too. You know, we believe the planning commission right here is the right venue to hear this case as far as Mr. Garabedian's appeal. To send this issue to MAC, Donner Summit MAC, basically accomplishes nothing, but basically puts Mr. Garabedian at a more advantageous jurisdiction, and thus, thus puts us in an unfair disadvantage. Allowing it to go to Donner MAC not only is unfair, but it's grossly time consuming. Not only that, because we would have to come back to this commission to take the recommendation from the MAC, and that puts us at a further disadvantage because we have only so much time to do construction up there. As, as you saw the first, the Tiger Company, there, there's only certain timeframe in the year that you can actually build up there, and it's the same that applies for us as well. You know, we believe you guys are just, just the right venue to hear this case. You know, we don't believe it needs to go to the Donner Summit or anywhere else. I don't see why we cannot hear this case here on April twelfth instead of having to go to this, Donner MAC Summit on the nineteenth.
Comments from the commission?
I do have a question for Karen. Are we prohibited as a matter of law from proceeding until such time as the window for the appellant to submit documentation has closed? If so, then the only question before us is when to reschedule the continuance.
Exactly.
Not whether to take it up at this time.
The answer to your question is yes.
Okay, so we cannot proceed now?
We've had this issue before.
So the issue then is, do we, or do we not continue it to a point in time which would allow for the Donner MAC to hear it? That's really what I'm asking.
Exactly, that's the issue, yeah.
April twelfth or May tenth is what we're discussing.
Exactly. We think, you know.
May thirteenth.
With going to next April twelfth hearing, that gives them more than thirty days to be here as far as it meets the thirty day period that he's allowed. And there's no reason to continue this to the nineteenth, and then from that point on to come back here on May tenth.
How come this didn't go to the MAC in the first place?
So, items that go before the zoning administrator do not go before the, a, any MAC. Not even appeals, actually. It's only planning commission items, or, yeah, planning commission items.
So then why are we looking for this one to go back to the MAC?
It's been requested by the appellant.
You know, I, I, does anybody else have the appellant's letter? I don't seem to have it.
Did the appeal information?
Yeah.
No, it wasn't in the packet.
Well, then how can we even discuss?
Well, we can't proceed on the substance.
Well, how can we even discuss the appellant's request that it be go to the MAC if we haven't even seen the wording? I don't have a thing on the appellant. Well, I'm going to read it now. It's too late now, but.
There should be a letter that, that you all had, handwritten letter.
Handwritten.
Showed up today.
Handwritten letter, nothing in front of me unless I, unless I missed it.
Well.
No.
Does our decision today turn on the substance of the appellant's appeal, or does it turn on procedure? Now, there is a strong policy in the county to run many things by the MAC, but not all. The idea being that public input is better the more we get of it.
My thought is if, if this didn't warrant going to the MAC in the first place, sending it back there now is.
You raise.
Setting one of those precedents you don't want sets.
Yes, yes.
Well, I like setting that precedent.
Let, let me try breaking this down into the, I think, the, the two issues we have before you right now. One, there is a thirty day period to present evidence and material by the appellant, and that apparently was cut short. So the first issue before, and really not a discretionary issue in my opinion, is that the planning commission needs to continue this matter to a date that allows that thirty days to be met. The second issue before the commission, I believe, is a policy issue. What you've heard from staff is that as a matter of course, items that go to the zoning administrator are not referred on to MACs. The appellant has no legal basis to force us to go to the MAC, but it's a policy issue for the commission to consider as you are thinking about the dates that you want to continue this item to.
Let me see, just, just so I can understand basically what we're talking about. This, the variance is a request for a sign?
Sign height.
Height.
Sign, it simply is.
So if there's other construction involved, it's just a sign that we're dealing with, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
I'd like to ask, the thirty days now, when, when would that be able to be heard if, if we allow for that thirty day?
If you allow for the thirty days, thirty days technically expires on the twenty-seventh.
Of this month.
Of this month.
We're a week early.
Yeah, a week early.
Maybe a second question too, just so I can be clear. Now, I heard raised the question whether the county has jurisdiction here, and it's been determined that the county does have jurisdiction?
Well, that is correct.
Okay.
As far as policy, I would like to point out that I believe sending the information to the MAC is probably better for us than not. I like the idea that the people who are going to be most involved and concerned about this are the people to be heard from, and that the idea that we're going to shortchange them because it'll take two weeks longer doesn't seem to hold up water, because I happen to know about the construction season up there, and this won't affect it.
Karen, just to make certain that I'm on the same page. Because we're continuing this to a date certain, we don't have to renotice it and thereby incur any additional statutory time periods. So we could set it for tomorrow if otherwise that thirty day window for the appellant's data was not an issue, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so the real issue that we're discussing right now is, we're going to continue it. We have to continue it as a matter of law. The question is, to what date? Do we want to allow enough time to let the Donner MAC hear it? Which is discretionary with them. They still don't have to hear it. We just put it on their plate. Or do we want to accommodate the applicant, not the appellant, and take it to the next meeting on the twelfth of April? And Mickey, you're saying you believe that it would be.
I would prefer to go to the MAC and let the people who are most involved have their say.
Okay, I understand that. But on the other hand, this is just a sign.
No, it's not actually. That's why we don't have enough information.
No, we don't.
I think it's more than a sign.
Well, but we're not talking about the project at this point.
Yeah, exactly.
Right, and so that the people up there might have that information given to them and have some chance to comment on them. Since we do take into account MAC's opinions frequently on this board, I think that that would be better to err on their favor than.
I just, I mean, my, my personal feeling, I hate adding another layer. There's enough layers, and anybody that is concerned is certainly welcome to come back to this meeting and address their concerns.
Or submit letters or emails.
Right, where that way the people that are involved, really care about the sign one way or the other can have.
Well, then you could just do away with the MAC entirely.
But I guess, I, I tend to have the same, same problem as you probably have, Jeff, is that we are adding another layer, but also you're throwing out there where every appeal, however minor it is, ends up that a person thinking, okay, can I delay this project farther? Here's a new thing. I can say it's, it's something that the administrator has approved. Somebody's appealing that, but one of their big deal is, is, well, it didn't go before the MAC. It was something that normally just goes to zoning administrator, and now all of a sudden, we're just, you know, we're, we're piling on.
And I, I personally think if we want to change that policy, that's a whole nother discussion for another time. I mean, because that's, 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 that's a pretty, pretty big, big thing that we'd be changing. And I think that should also get some, some public input and stuff.
I'm not fine with the change in policy being a big thing, that we listen to the MACs. I mean, using your argument that it's another layer, well, that's the whole idea of it, is having a layer. Otherwise, you can just do away with the MAC entirely. Everybody still has the right to come here at any commission.
Well, we're taking something that doesn't normally have to be.
No, no, they're not. Yeah, not, not something that normally goes before a zoning administrator, where it has to go before the MAC, before the zoning administrator could hear it. I mean, that's, I guess I sort of see that going that way.
Between the decision made by the zoning administrator and then the appellant. So it would appear to me that more people knowing about that argument would be better off for us, then we'd be able to hear all these parts.
But I heard that from Michael Johnson, that the standard operating procedure is that these kind of things don't go to the MAC. Is that correct, or is there exceptions?
That is correct. Based upon the current policy established by the board, variance applications such as this are not considered by the MAC.
So we're not eliminating?
Variant applications for arguments on appellate against that administrator's decision.
The, the board's action did not consider the possibility of an appeal and whether or not that appeal should be presented to the MAC.
Okay, has appeals in the past on zoning administrator's decision gone to the MAC?
In, in, in some instances, yes, they have, but in others, they haven't. It's been on a case by case basis.
This instance, I'm saying they should.
Okay, yes, you know, I'd like to make a comment here too, a question or something, you know. You know, I can understand the value of MACs and having input from the MACs. In this case, we're talking about a sign alongside a freeway, and this is one of the most major freeways in the country that affects millions of people. And so, you know, whether or not the MAC is the most appropriate body to hear this, you know, I'm sure they're affected, but there's a whole larger population that's affected. And so, like has been said here, if, you know, the people that really don't like to see a sign like this go up, then they can come to the planning commission hearing. And so, in my mind, you know, though the MACs are important, I understand that, and particularly for the major projects, you know, we want to make sure we have their input on that. But in this case, I guess I'm kind of questioning how much value to the discussion that would add.
I guess you would never know that until you heard from the MAC and made that decision, if whether it was value or not.
Well, I, I still question the value, considering the number of people that use the freeway, and it's going to affect all those people. So that's going to be a judgment that this, this body has to make.
And the only reason that we're required or being requested to hear that is because the applicant wants to get on with it. And we understand that.
Is there anybody else wanting to speak on this?
Marilyn?
Marilyn Jasper speaking on behalf of Publicators Coalition and the Sierra Club. This is an interesting discussion, and I want to throw out, what will you, or what would be the result if the MAC requests to hear this at their next meeting? It's my understanding, it's the prerogative, it's the, the MAC, MACs can initiate the item to, that the item be put on their agenda. So what would your decision be if, if they came back? I mean, maybe that should be a condition of whatever you vote on. We want to hear this, and then, and if your decision is April twelfth, and they, you know, that, I think that creates other issues. Plus, as a rural resident, the MAC is our one line of communication that may or may not hold any water. I think it's really important, and I hope it's not dismissed, just because it was a zoning administrator's decision.
I think the answer to your question is, we'd be sitting here on the twelfth of April debating whether to continue it again.
Exactly.
So that we can incorporate the MAC's comment, and this time it would probably be how to.
Let me clarify something. If this goes to the, the MAC, it's not the appeal that is going to go to the MAC. The MAC doesn't have authority to hear appeals. Those, those are dictated pursuant to the zoning provisions. It would go to the MAC as the project, the project request. So I, I just want to make sure that that's clear. It's not going.
No, that did not help. What do you mean?
Well.
The project request?
Well, the, the, what goes to the MAC is the application request, whatever the project is. And if this was to be referred back to the MAC, it would be to discuss the variance, which is the application pro, that's the request.
Oh, okay.
Not the appeal. It would not go as an appeal to the MAC.
No, what we would be sending to the MAC would be whatever it is that's on our plate and just looking for their input on it. They have no authority to decide it, but I do value their opinions.
Right, I mean, they would, they would do what they would do with any project that would go before them is, is provide their comments and recommendations on the project. And I just want to make sure that's clear. They would not be dealing with the appeal of.
The project is not the building of a shopping center, and this is only one little part of it, is it? Or is the whole project a sign? We don't know.
The project as it's described in the staff report is the sign height.
Okay, all right.
A variance for the sign height.
Just for the record, does that mean that the, the actual appeal application wouldn't go to the MAC if it, if it's sent there?
Well, the appeal application is part of the public record, but I think it has to be clear in fairness to the MAC as well that, because this is, first of all, it wouldn't have gone to the MAC to begin with. This is now out of order. So in fairness to the MAC, they need to understand that what they are going to comment on is that, that initial application for variance to sign height. Certainly, we wouldn't preclude them from having whatever is in the public record, but we're going to have to make it very, very clear what their role is in the process.
So, so there's a, a bigger project here that really isn't subject to.
No, no, no.
Well, let me ask my question. Let me ask my question.
Yeah.
Okay. Just to clarify what was just said. Okay, there's a bigger project here, and that project falls within the conditions of the zoning. And so that's been approved, just go build it. And so the only issue that's come up is the sign and the height of the sign. And that's the project that would go to the MAC to be considered?
The, the only thing that's being considered and has been requested at this time is a variance to the height, overall height of a freestanding sign that's proposed to be relocated on the property.
And so when you talk about project, that's the project?
That's the project.
Okay.
So Karen, when we consider the appeal, aren't we effect considering the application de novo? Okay, so that's what we would be asking the MAC to provide input on, not specifically the appeal, although the merits of that and the arguments pro or con can certainly be considered by them, but they would be considering this project as if it was coming for the county for the first time.
Correct.
Has the MAC heard of these other things, that there's a bigger project here, which I guess there is?
It's just a sign.
No, 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 not this, but I'm talking about referencing other things around there then. Has the MAC provided input to the, whatever's out there that's not part of this sign?
There, there, as, as, as was stated by Mr. Haas, there, there is no bigger project. The building is not being changed. The only thing the applicant is requesting is a sign.
Previously, this was last year, a design review was approved to add a diesel fueling, diesel fuel tank to the existing gas station.
Did the MAC, did the MAC hear that?
No, that was a design review agreement. It was a ministerial approval. They, they.
I wanted to know if the MAC has been involved in this property, I won't say project, property before.
Right, no.
So if you were on the MAC, would you want to hear it? That's what it comes down to.
Michael Garabedian, Friends of the North Fork, let me explain our, our thinking. This, this variance has not had any kind of environmental document. The first opportunity to discuss it publicly was with the zoning administrator. So we looked upon the, getting the opinion of the MAC, if they, whatever they had to say, pro or con, have no idea, as an importantly needed opportunity. There, there, at the, at the variance hearing, it was discussed that there was a proposal to reopen the restaurant and other things. The key thing from our point of view is that the actual sign application itself has not been submitted. So as a member of the, because we're apparently just talking about the height of the sign, not what's on the sign. So that, the county's consideration of what's on the sign comes later. Usually for something with various questions, you, you've got some kind of environmental document so you can see what the whole project is, all the different pieces of it are and so forth. We don't have that, so it's really hard. It's a really big, we've never been involved in a variance issue before. It's a really big burden on us, and we're glad to take it to try to understand the different implications of the project. So the opportunity to go to the MAC is, is for us simply an important way to get further discussion about what the project is and how it might be changed if possible, and what conditions might be put on it in the variance process or otherwise. We, we don't have the answers. We, we don't have the answers to those. We're working hard on it, and we understand completely, it's your decision whether or not, today, whether or not to refer it to the MAC. And we're just, we're delighted to see you discussing this. I think that's exactly what you should be doing.
Thank you.
Let me ask, let me add a comment, that, you know, policy being one thing and how you feel about the MAC looking on it is yet another. But I will add this, that in my opinion, the burden placed on the applicant by a delay in this matter from the twelfth of April to the thirteenth of May for the building of a sign is inconsequential. You know, where we do this to people like North Star and Squaw Valley, where they're doing major grading and whatnot, and their season ends the fifteenth of October, it's a big deal. But for a sign, I don't think that the burden is so great that we should preclude the MAC.
I tend to agree.
I'm not surprised.
So we make a motion?
We have a motion.
I could offer one final piece of information on this. In looking at the scheduling, we have a hearing set on May... There's, there's a hearing date available, the twenty-sixth. There's nothing on that agenda. We have a second hearing on May tenth that has two items on the agenda. It's possible we could move those up and hear all three of them on the twenty-sixth, and that would only be seven days a week after the Donner Summit MAC meets. That's subject to, if I'm, if I'm correct, Kathy, you have?
There's a major expense associating with gathering us all together for, for these meetings, and my preference would be just go ahead and do what we said in the first place. And so for that reason, I'll make a motion this matter be continued to the commission's meeting on the thirteenth of May, and the matter be offered to the Donner MAC for their consideration if they feel like taking it up.
A second? Have a motion and a second?
We're about to get a clarification.
May thirteenth.
Oh, it's the twelfth, May twelve?
May twelfth.
Oh, sorry. Okay, with that correction, my motion is as stated.
We still have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number three, again, I believe we have a, a letter requesting that this be postponed to an indefinite date and time?
Mr. Chair, this item is a proposed zoning text amendment regarding the timber production land harvest zone area. Late yesterday, staff received a letter from the lead to save Lake Tahoe. After reviewing the letter, it was concluded that there was merit in requesting a continuance of this item. Staff has contacted the applicant, and the applicant has conferred with that request for a continuance. There is a letter from the applicant that has been presented to you. Staff would recommend, and the applicant concurs, that this item be continued off calendar to allow staff sufficient time to review the issues and properly respond, and at such time that we, we are ready to move forward again. All required notification will be provided, and we will set a date before your commission.
Comments from the commissioners? Okay, does anybody in the audience want to speak to the issue of the continuance itself and not the merits of the project? Okay, that being said, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the continuance to the time that, bringing back the...
Off calendar.
It was an open date.
Open date, and I'll second.
Have a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So be it, and with that, I believe, meeting adjourned.